Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Decatur? Ms. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Do we have a motion to per the agenda?
Motion to per the agenda, second.
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Young. All favor?
Aye.
I all pose. This is chair to the end. We have a special presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to move down to this other. You got a thing to bring it down a little bit? It'd be great. No, I'm good. Although, I have to say, somebody made a comment about my tie matching the colors in the presentation. That was not purposeful, I'm just saying. So, Board members, you have a PowerPoint version of this presentation that has a copy of all of the information that I'll be sharing this evening. I'm going to be using a different presentation tool that allows me to drop primary source documents into it, so rather than recreating information. We have a fair number of documents that we've created that support where we are headed with budget development, so it felt like it was a good opportunity to take advantage of those things. This will be a high-level overview of what I'm asking the Board to consider in putting together your funding requests, of course, which will go to the supervisors. This is my request of you as the school board. When we come to our work session next week on Tuesday, we'll have the document, the budget book for you that evening, and we will walk through the more detailed level. And I have to say, there are a lot of details that are available to the Board this year. Our new tool, budget planning tool inside of Munis, really allows us to provide all kinds of supporting documentation for all of these requests, so just ask, and I think we'll be able to provide you with whatever additional information you might be looking for. So I just want to remind the Board a little bit about what we set as budget goals. We had some that are revolve around student achievement, that we want to continue to support our schools in meeting our basic expectations set forth by the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we are doing a good job of that. Support C-5W work and training for staff, which doesn't necessarily mean there are additional dollars put into the budget, because some of the monies that we put in in previous years were recurring, so support for professional development and the Teaching and Learning Institute, as an example, are already included. We reviewed those costs, but there's no increase associated with the funding request to continue that effort. And then, as an enhancement focus, fund focus teachers, diagnostician, and face computer initiative for teachers and staff to assist in classroom skills, all of which, we've got some element of these included in my funding request. Reducing class sizes, being able to maintain what we've established as elementary class sizes is an important part of this funding request, so there's additional FTEs to deal with, with growth. And then, we have some things to think about in terms of what might look differently at the secondary level, middle and in high school. Fund any VRS changes. The Board will be pleasantly surprised if there is no increase in VRS rates. Matter of fact, there's a decrease in VRS rates for next year, and I'll be sharing that with you in a little bit more detail in a minute. As a baseline, 1% increase for all employees. The Board also asks that we look at an enhancement that might include another 1.5%, so I've built this budget with actually a 2.5% across the board for all employees. Continue doing our market analysis, and I'm going to share some of that with you as we go through the presentation. And then, we have priorities. Establish a funding agreement with Board supervisors. We're not there yet. We're going to talk about where the conversation is right now with the Board supervisors, that we continue to look at ways to enhance our competitive position with employee, teacher and employee compensation. What else can we take out of staffing standards and try to implement? Continue to support with our curriculum, and I'm real excited about the work that's going on there. We have very much standardized the budgeting process, and you'll see that in the manner in which departments and schools are allocated those resources, and then monitoring our spending and revenue, which will become even easier for us as we go into next year, because we'll have all of our salary information in the new system as well. So, we also have a tool for the Board to use this year called Forecast 5 that allows you to make comparisons pretty much about anything about us as a school system with any division in the Commonwealth that you might want to compare to. We have it initially configured to look at our comparison divisions, so if you want to look at local compensation and benefit trends, we can see how we compare to other divisions. You want to look at revenue and expenditure trends by fund, object, we can do that across other divisions, which is pretty amazing. Access to big data for not a big price tag, by the way. So I wanted to show you what that would look like. This is an offal graph to look at, okay? I'm going to zero in on part of this. These are all of our comparative school divisions, and these are the percentages of students that are identified for special education services. Stafford is the very last group from 2011 to 2017, so they're at the end. One of the things that I would ask the Board to note is if you look at the percentage of students that are identified for special education, we are among the lowest in our comparison divisions, which to me says that our tiered intervention model is doing what we would hope it would do, and that students are getting the support they need in those early tiers before the point of needing to have an IEP. You'll also notice that there are some trends in growth, so I just blew up our section there. So you'll notice that one of the areas where we're seeing additional identification are kids that are somewhere on the autism spectrum. So, like I said, this information is available for every school division in the Commonwealth, and we can compare anything that the Board might want to compare that is available in the system, including what it's costing us to provide special education services. So I'm going to zero in on our average cost to provide special education services, and I put the red asterisks here because we lose the Stafford on the accesses as we zoom in here. So we're at about an average of $13,538 to provide special education services across the division, which is below the average of our comparison divisions, not the lowest, but below the average. So if we're looking at percentage identified, we're looking at the cost, we're in the ballpark. And this is, you know, an area where we have had questions about how we're doing in this area, and so we've got some tools that will help. And this is just one example, but as we get into our budget work, anything that the Board might want to look at in terms of additional analysis, we can very quickly generate comparative data from our other school divisions. And we're doing pretty well, otherwise. In terms of achievement, all of our schools remain fully accredited. Now, we can't say that we're the largest division with all schools fully accredited, because Virginia Beach made it this past year, but we can say that we are the largest school division that has had all schools fully accredited for three years in a row, which is a pretty significant statement. We continue to outperform the Commonwealth as an average on SOL tests. Our class sizes are improving, and I'm not going to go into the rest. These items, Board members can take a look at them. This is part of the letter that we put in the freelance star, alerting folks to what we've done with our new report to the community, so I want to highlight that just a little bit. This is the brief. We have the full document that's available as well, but inside of that annual report, we can look to see how we're doing with our accreditation, our on-time graduation, which is really doing well there, and how we compare with SOL scores to the state average. We also have information in that report about what we did in the last budget process, which is, you know, we identified an area that needed some attention in terms of compensation for our paraprofessionals, $2.5 million out of the low of the market. Board allocated an additional $500,000 to begin to get some improvement there. There's more work to be done. We added staff to continue to support class size. I would note, and again, this is last year's budget information, the majority of our budget is tied to our people, and so salary and benefits. You'll notice that last year, 83.5% of our expenditures were related to salaries and benefits, and I'm also very proud to say that the majority of our expenses are tied to instruction, with 74.4% headed to instruction last year, just a reminder of where we were previously. So let's talk about where we might should go in terms of compensation and benefits. So usually, I show this chart with all of the comparison divisions. It's a little busy, and being able to see where the median of the market is is a little bit of a challenge. We certainly have that information to share with the Board if the Board wants to see that, but we simply left the median of the market on this particular graph. And so, the median of the market is the one that has the blue line running through it. The Board members can see that we are still slightly below market at about 11 years and under of experience, and that that position improves as we move to a higher number of years of experience. So what could teacher salaries look like next year if we do a market adjustment and then do a 2.5% across the board? So let's take a look. If we do a market enhancement in getting folks to the median of the market, that will cost us approximately $1.8 million to get to the median of the market, and then we would be done. I suspect, moving forward, that the kind of adjustments that we would need to do in future years would be relatively minor in terms of keeping at the median of the market if that remains the target for the Board. So if we target the median of the market and a little bit of separation between years of service, and then we add a 2.5% increase to that, that puts our starting teacher salary at just over $44,000, okay? Three and a half years ago, when I came to the division, our starting teacher salary was $37.7. So we've had some significant improvement here. It's not where it needs to be. You're going to see that we have a large number of teachers in early years of experience with us. We have to figure out how it is that we're going to try and hang on to them, and I've got something I'd like the Board to consider, not for FY '19, but potentially for FY '20 if we can get to the median of the market. So there's the entry portion of the scale, and then I'm going to zoom down here and look at what the upper end of the scale would look like. Keep in mind, this is for bachelor's degree only, so this is base. This does not include the master supplement. It does not include the additional funds that teachers get for being nationally board certified. It does not include any stipends they may have access to because of other responsibilities that they are assigned, so baseline compensation. So what's the distribution of our workforce look like for teachers? We have a lot of teachers on the front end of our scale, year zero, one, and two, just over 270 teachers, and we can see that that's the part of the scale where we're seeing the greatest amount of attrition, folks leaving us for whatever reason they are leaving us. And then, it kind of slows down a little bit as we get into the increased number of years of experience. And when you get up to the top end, you look at the distribution, and the number of folks that have that years of services is significantly less, and instead of people leaving us, you know, to go work someplace else, they're leaving us because they're entering retirement, okay? So two different issues really for us to look at, and I also want to note that when you look at the number of folks that have that years of experience, for example, 10 teachers with 33 years of experience, that does not mean that those 33 years of experience are all with us, okay? These are cumulative years, and that's important, because there's something I would like the Board to start thinking about if we can knock out this target of the median of the market in this next year's funding request, where we might be able to go in the future that could distinguish us as a school system in the Commonwealth, because we need something to distinguish us that is affordable and sustainable over time, but perhaps looks different than what teachers might be able to get in some other localities. So if you think about folks at the two ends of our scale, the issues are different, right? You're at zero, one, two. We'd like you to hang on for a little bit more than that. There are some differences in expectations that are pretty well documented between the millennial generation and folks that are of the baby boomer generation, which would be me, looking for some stability, not wanting to change employers too often, an opportunity to advance within your organization. The research on millennials is a little bit different, that perhaps they're looking for an opportunity to change, and, you know, what can we do to try and entice them to stay for a little bit longer? Having people leave at zero, one, and two, that's a real challenge for us, because we've invested in them. Our mentor teachers have gone to great strides to help them learn the Stafford County way and be successful in their classrooms, and then they're out the door. So one strategy might be for us to look at retention bonuses that are strategically placed throughout the lower end of the scale, to say, you know what, if you just stayed with us for another couple of years, there might be a lump sum payment that was one-time payment, would not have any VRS associated with it, but might be enough to get folks to hang on for a couple more years. Wouldn't have to do it all at once, might want to pilot it in one portion of the scale where we're seeing a significant amount of turnover, because I think you would see pretty quickly if it reduced the turnover or not. I would point out that our turnover last year was the lowest it's been in a while, at about 11.4%. Any adjustments we would do moving forward for FY '20, we would see, I think, relatively quickly if it was having the desired effect on turnover. Now, at the other end of the scale, we have our career teachers, folks that have made a commitment to call Stafford County Public Schools their professional home, and these are folks then that have spent, in some cases, their entire career. So you have somebody that's got 20 years of service, all 20 of those years might be with us. As this line, salary line, is going to flatten out over time as we continue to implement the model, okay? I feel like there needs to be an incentive, a recognition at the upper end of the scale that would be a career scale enhancement, much in the same way that we have been enhancing our entry level to get to the median of the market. It's modeled very loosely on a model that is in place in San Francisco Public Schools that has a different kind of an adjustment for folks that are career teachers, not for somebody that transfers in with 18 years of experience and then gets two more and hits 20, but somebody who's been with us for 20 years, and I think there's a way for us to say that there's an adjustment there that we could make that would make the upper end of our scale a little bit more attractive. And again, I think that as we're looking at these metrics in terms of turnover, that we would be able to tell fairly quickly if it was having the impact that we intended it to have on turnover. You know, the workforce pool for teachers, the applicant pool, is shrinking. We've talked about that. We have to figure out how we distinguish ourselves as an organization. There are lots of ways to doing that, but some of that may be thinking out of the box about how we compensate folks and recognizing that in certain portions of the scale or the workforce, it might need to look different in one place than what it looks like in another, provided that we're getting the results that we intend to get. Blue Cross Blue Shield, our insurance, and this includes our health benefits, or dental benefits for the second year in a row. We are not projecting any increase for employees. So moving to a jointly bid health insurance package with local government, I think was a great move for us as an organization. We saved a fair amount in operational costs in doing that. We're having a great year in terms of experience. Remember that we are self-insured. Our experience rate for the first quarter here has been very positive. I think if there is any increase, that we have a mechanism to be able to deal with it, so I'm not anticipating that the Board would need to pass on any increase to employees. I talked about this a little bit with my new business advisory group, and they're like, well, that's kind of unprecedented, because that's not what they're experiencing in providing health care for their employees. There's more work for us to do here. We want to have Aon come back in. Aon is the consulting firm that we use to go out and do the joint bid, to look at whether or not there would be benefits for us to put our experience pools together. Right now, our experience pools are separate. There might be some additional safeguard buffering that we would get if we brought the two pools together, and there's still some misalignment. We're not aligned completely with what the premiums are for folks on local government side versus the school system side. So there's some more alignment that would need to take place if we're going to move to one benefit package for all public employees in the county, but this is certainly good news for us moving forward, which means any increase that the Board gives in the budget for FY '19, it'll be noticed, because it won't get consumed by, won't get consumed by an increase in health care costs. The other thing that we have in our favor is we've got some new tax tables that are coming into play, and so the withholding at the federal level is going to be less, and that will help folks realize a little bit more take-home pay as well. So, you know, a lot of times you go into budget meetings and you kind of know what's going to happen. People come in and they ask for a lot of additional things, right? Whether they're people or technology, could be computers, or we need more bandwidth, or, you know, whatever those things might be. So some of the departments came in with savings that they identified, and so they started out their conversation with me in a way that is kind of unusual, and that is, you can reduce the budget that's coming to our department, because we found these savings. And that was the case with technology. They reduced their budget by about a quarter million dollars. So how did they do that? Well, our move to Chromebooks, they have a whole lot less overhead than typical laptops or desktop machines. We have moved to the Google Suite of applications, and so we use cloud storage that is not our storage, so we don't have to have the same amount of server capacity that we need in order to have folks have a place to store their files, so there were savings there. The other thing that they did is they went out and looked to see if there was an internet service provider that could give us a better deal on the internet access portion of our network, and yeah, they found one that gives us a much better deal. So I just wanted to give them a little recognition here, and they're putting us in a good position without compromising anything that they're trying to take care of in their department. So growth, okay? And growth comes in lots of different forms. I think the one thing that we go to kind of naturally is, well, how many more students are we talking about, and what has that trend been for the last few years? But there's also a change in the service level that we need to provide, depending upon the needs of those students that are coming into the division. So this is no secret to the Board. We are growing. We are continuing to grow. The students that are coming to us, we're having more students that require some form of additional support in special education. We have more students that are identified as being eligible for free and reduced lunch. We have more English language learners in the division, and all of those have a level of support that comes along with them that is not just about how many new students do we have. So as we go into this funding request, you're going to see there are, there's a request for additional FTE. Some of those FTEs are tied to services that we're providing, special education services. This is a conversation that we've had with the Board across budget years. It's not just X number of additional teachers that we need, it's X number of additional special education teachers that we need, or ESOL teachers because of the increased load that we're seeing with our English language learners in the division. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention again. So there are additional 90.5 full-time equivalents included in this funding request, okay? And that excludes the additional FTEs that the Board added to deal with growth in the current fiscal year. We rolled that number up. Make sure I got that right, Chris, right? Yes. We rolled that number up and the overall number, okay? But this is in addition to the FTEs that the Board already approved to help us with growth in this current fiscal year. Because those positions were not included in what the Board adopted as a budget, they look like an add for next year, but we have to continue to fund them. So what does that look like, okay? And I won't go all the way down the list, but this is a place for you to start with. This is part of the spreadsheets that as we move into the work session with the Board, starting on Tuesday next week at 6:00, some of the supporting information that will be available to you along with your budget book, what are those positions, and are they compliance positions or not? Many of them are compliance, and we've got those marked with a yes there. There are some others here that are equity issues that we're trying to address. The Board had identified focus teachers at the elementary level, so that we were not sharing focus teachers, so that's a local standard that the Board is adopting. I've included those FTEs in this funding request. The Board asks that we try to make some progress with the diagnosticians. I've included that. Those are not required positions. ESOL teachers, for additional for growth in our ESOL program, we project that as a baseline. Yeah, that's a requirement. We're going to need those, okay? And while we can say that teachers for growth is not a compliance issue, we know that if we're going to continue to maintain the class sizes that we currently have in the division, we're going to need those growth positions, okay? So the overwhelming majority of the additional FTEs directly impact kids in some way, okay? Of that 90.5. There are three that I'm asking the Board to consider that do not, okay? And those three are, number one is an attorney for the Board. We very much appreciated having Mr. Nelson and his JD, and Ms. Boatwright and her JD helping us with some kinds of issues. We contract a lot of services out to, whether it's Reed Smith or some other attorney. Not enough to offset the cost entirely, but it would offset a good portion of it. But to have somebody available for general counsel, whether it's contract issues or personnel issues, or, you know, what we're doing with changes in policy, having the attorney available at Board meetings to be able to represent the Board in the event that, you know, the Board needed representation. It's not going to, you know, like I said, it's not going to be awash in terms of cost, and this person is not going to do the very specialized work that occurs in the area of special education, I suspect, that we'll continue to contract those services with folks that do that for, like, pretty much every division in the Commonwealth. Director of Facility Planning, Design, Construction is a position that was cut about 10 years ago. This is a department that is going to continue to see some growth as we build and maintain our current facilities. We've also shifted into that department in general, responsibility for transportation and school nutrition. I feel strongly that we should see if there's not a way to provide some additional support there. And the last one, well, it has a dollar amount associated with it. I think there are savings in general that we would realize in the division. We don't have a way at this point to really manage how we move furniture and equipment around the division. So, for example, you might have a School A that has 20 desks that are surplus and that don't need them anymore, okay? And then you've got another school on the other side of the division that needs 20 desks. We don't have good communication when it comes to those resources and how we're allocating them, so it's quite possible you could have somebody purchase those 20 desks when they didn't need to purchase those 20 desks, because we could shuffle some furniture around the division in order to meet those needs. So in any case, three positions I would like the Board to consider that are non-connected, not connected directly to working with students. Okay, infrastructure. All right, so the model that we're using for infrastructure is that we want to spend approximately 1% to 3% of the current replacement value of our facilities across the division as a whole, okay? We have not been able, we haven't come anywhere close to 3%. 1% would represent about a $10 million investment, okay? We have $5 million in bonded funds that are available through the CIP, okay? And that seems to be safe at this point in terms of how we're looking at the CIP. We have virtually nothing in recurring dollars to fund infrastructure improvement out of operational funds. And local government has a financial policy that would say that we should have somewhere in the neighborhood of 2% of our operating budget in cash to fund infrastructure improvements. Well, that would be about $5 million. And so, I, at this point, have put in $1.5 million in recurring money to help support infrastructure. We have way more than that that's sitting out there that needs attention. If we manage to have some savings in the current fiscal year, then we could allocate some of those savings to try to advance some additional projects. I left the transportation and the Howard Elementary School wastewater treatment plant at the top of the list until the Board decides what it is that you want to do with our request for reappropriation with supervisors. If those come off or don't move forward, we'll have to figure out whatever else needs to go up there, but we do have savings from FY '17 that could fund a majority of those two projects or other projects that the Board should choose. However, I want to point out that I did not include these two projects in my request to the Board, because right now I'm working on the assumption that either these or an equivalent amount will get funded with savings from FY '17. And hopefully, we take across projects that seem to resonate with the Board supervisors, because ultimately, they get to decide whether or not those funds get re-appropriated or not. So if we can make a compelling story for what we're asking those funds to be re-appropriated to do, the better for us, the more likely that that will happen. But let's just, for discussions purposes, let's say that happens, those two things get funded. get funded. With $1.5 million, you only get down to number seven on the list in recurring dollars. And then if there are any savings in the current fiscal year, then we could get a few more of those projects taken care of. We need to gradually build this up over time so that we're more predictable and reliable in how we're taking care of our facilities across the division as a whole. And, you know, I know it's a challenge, because you have lots of needs within the organization. Our challenge here is to make sure that some part of the organization doesn't kind of unravel while we're addressing some other portion of the organization. So, you know, infrastructure, you know, at times seems like, you know, it could be something that you could push off. There are consequences for that in terms of the cost, and we would prefer to get something replaced before it breaks outright, and we were forced to have to do something there. So, I'm not going to go through the list. The board will get an opportunity to see that in the work session, and we'll see what direction the board chooses to go with projects that get funded. Same thing's true of buses, okay? The request that came to me had 25 buses in it. That's $2.5 million. I don't think we can do 25 buses all at one time. We have about 260 buses in the fleet. If a bus, you know, stays good for 15 years, which is, that's kind of what the model is, then we need to be replacing about 18 buses annually, which is $1.8 million. Last year, we put six buses into the budget. That was about $600,000. I'm asking the board to consider putting another six buses into the budget. That will get us to $1.2 million. And if we can do that one more time, we'll have what we need for recurring replacement. And then when these bubble years come through, when we've got more buses, because we purchased a large number of buses in one year, we can look at what savings we have in the current fiscal year to try and address the bubble, but the baseline replacement should be taken care of. So this is an Excel spreadsheet that Mr. McOssker had some significant input in a couple of years ago, which is the way we kind of do the up and downs with where are the increases for the board. We'll have this available for the board as a part of our budget work session. Just going to walk down the list so you can see what we've included on a very high level. So we have the median teacher pay scale enhancement at about $1.8 million. Service scale enhancement, $1 million. The board will need to decide where to put it and how much to put it, how much to put there, okay? So we know that paraprofessionals are still $2 million out of the low of the market. Board can decide, well, how much of that do we want to put in paraprofessionals? We need a little bit more to knock out bus drivers and monitors and take care of them. But you can have some flexibility as to where you might want to assign that. How much of a market enhancement do we want to try and go after? You know, we have not been in a position to take care of things in one year's time, okay? And so we're here going into my fourth budget, although I don't know that I can count the first one, because I was sworn in on the day we presented it to the supervisors. We've taken a strategic, multi-year look at improvement, and I think we're likely going to have to do that with most everything that we bring onboard. So 2.5% COLA adjustment, a little over $5 million. Some miscellaneous conversions and adjustments. One of those would be to take an 11-month clerical position, administrative assistant position at each one of the elementary schools, and make them a 12-month position. We've heard from the board and from schools about the disadvantage we are at by not having a 12-month person in the buildings during the time that students are registering, and making sure that we're getting that information into our system as soon as possible. You know, there are a couple of other ones in there that we'll talk about as part of the work session. Then we have the new positions that we added in FY '19. Sorry, FY '18. So we have to fund those as of moving forward. Then there are the new positions added in what I'm asking the board to consider. We are doing a stipend analysis, even though the stipends were not on the board's priorities. We're going to let you know how we're doing with stipends across the division. We know there are some inequities, particularly in the visual and performing arts, where we have some folks that are receiving stipends and certain areas that are not. Those may be some quick fixes for us with those funds. If it turns out that our stipends are really out of line with stipends that are available to teachers in our comparison divisions for doing similar tasks, that will take a longer fix. But I think there are some things here that we can correct as a part of the FY '19 budget. And then some minor changes in fleet services, utilities, materials, and supplies. And again, I would note that the overwhelming majority of the increases are tied to people, and there's the salaries and benefits that are associated with them. So we have some savings in lapse. This is something that we have had a lot of interest in, and one year to the next. So when we have a position that is not filled for some period of time, it results in lapse savings for the division. We're pleasantly surprised by the reduction in the rate for the VRS contribution. That's not something that's negotiable for us. Whatever they tell us we have to pay is what we have to pay, but it dropped down into 15 point, thereabouts, close enough. It's less than what it was last year. So that's good news, which also must mean that they're doing really well with their investments, because we want that program to be a solvent program. It's a tremendous benefit for all of our employees. And then some other savings that are just due to replacing staff members at salaries that are lower than the staff members that are leaving us, which is different than lapse. Lapse are vacant positions. Those other savings are differences in compensation based upon somebody leaving the division and the potential to replace them with someone who's making a little bit less, okay? So I'm going to not talk about the rest on this slide, I'm going to go to the revenue picture, okay? So how are we going to fund this thing, okay? I don't have any new information from the supervisors. I just want to remind the board of what Mr. Foley presented to the supervisors. He presented three scenarios regarding a tax rate. The first one assumes an equalized rate. The second one assumes a 1% change in rate, which would not require a public hearing. And the third assumes a constant rate of the current tax rate, 99 cents. He also discussed with the board, or presented for the board supervisors, consideration a funding model that might look at some percentage of new revenues coming to the school system. What they discussed was a 50% split of new revenues with two exceptions. The meals tax, we would get at 100%, and the merchants' capital would be split at 37.5%. What might that mean for us next year? Well, it means that we could be looking at funding ranging anywhere from $3.5 million to $7.8 million, but we don't know, okay? And so we're not making any assumption about what we would see from the locality in trying to close the gap that we're going to have in this funding request. So, the Commonwealth of Virginia. And let's just say disappointing, okay? $4.2 million in new revenue, that's half of what we received last year. The outgoing governor's budget doesn't have any support for raises for SOQ-funded positions in the first year of the biennial budget. They're in December of '19. It would be great if the new governor might try and find a way to move some of that support into the first year of the budget, and that would put us in a better position in closing the gap. There are some limitations to that $4.2 million. Some of those dollars are tied specifically to program support, so it's not like we can use that to cover, you know, just a generic increase in compensation. So our budget for, the adopted budget for 2018 was almost $280 million. This increase represents a $16.7 million increase in the ASK, which is about a 5.9% increase. The revenue increase at this point, the only thing that we're putting in here is what is in the governor's proposed budget at this point, okay? And that's that $4.2 million, which leaves us with a gap of just over $12 million. Okay? So with that, I am turning this request over to the school board, and we'll have our first work session Tuesday next week, where you'll receive the full budget book, but this will give you the kind of high-level, here's what we're thinking about. And just as a reference point, have the budget calendar that the board adopted. I know there have been a couple of changes, but next up for the board will be this work session at 6:00 next week, Tuesday. And then I think we have a Fab C meeting scheduled the following day, right? And then additional work sessions for the board. So with that, I'd be happy to try and respond to any very general questions. If we have, if we really want to get into the more specific information, I would ask that the board hold those questions until we get to the work session and can get the rest of the budget documentation to the board for your consideration.
I have one. I have one comment. Just in terms of the difference from last year, when you brought the funding request, last year we had an assumption that there would be a certain amount of support from the local government. I know you and I had multiple discussions about that. This $12 million request is how I viewed it, assumes right now no local level funding.
That's correct. And also want to emphasize that this is my request to you, the school board. And as the board begins to deliberate and determine what you want to support and advocate for or move forward, that number could certainly change.
Just-
But no assumptions about any local revenue, other than what has been presented publicly for the board supervisors to consider.
The reason I wanted to bring that up, especially for our newborn members and for those who watched last year, there was a lot of confusion between what they funded last year. They said they fully funded our budget, which was not indeed the case, and we had a $7 million gap. So there was some confusion. So I thank you for not putting any local support in there, even though I do believe we will get some, but I think that shows what a realistic ask we are having. So I appreciate the change from last year. Anyone else? No? Well, we'll talk about it next Tuesday.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any requests for Dr. Benson to provide along with the budget books next Tuesday? If you do, if you could just, you know, send him an email by the end of the week, that would be helpful, I think, for him. Thank you. All right. Well, that, you go ahead and adjourn this meeting and open our special call meeting. Do we have a, let's see, do we do another roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McOssker?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion for Ms. Hazard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Chase, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss and consider the acquisition of real property pursuant to the real property acquisition exemption at Section 2.237-1183 of the Code of Virginia, and discuss and consider a personnel matter pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.237 Alpha 1, Code of Virginia.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, we are now in closed session.